Next, from West Park, we have two students. They're both going to come out with Mr. Strabo and I'm going to read one and then the other, all right? So both of them can come out at the same time. First, we have Dakota Knotts. All right. Dakota has shown such leadership by helping out his classmates and leading by example. He shows kindness by helping out all his friends that are in need. He helped Mr. Zack, the evening custodian, with our classroom trash every day. He also helps put up chairs without ever being asked. He is such compassionate for others, he always does his best to be respectful, responsible, and in control. West Park is very proud of him. Keep up the good work, Dakota. All right. And then, we have Clara Coogie. Clara comes to school ready to learn and laugh each day and prepared for the holidays. She is friendly and caring toward all of her classmates. Clara is always respectful and responsible in the classroom, hallways, and playground. She sets a great example for her peers to follow, and she's a hard worker, too. She always does what's expected of her. Keep up the great work in kindergarten. Congratulations to Dakota and Clara. Come on, the cuteness quotient is like off the chart. I taught 12th grade, you can tell. All right, next from Williard, we have two people being awarded, coming across the stage with Mr. Kuzier. First, we have Cooper Byers in first grade, whose teacher, Laura Shaw, nominated him. Cooper is respectful, responsible, and in control. All words that describe Cooper Byers. He is an excellent role model for his classmates and for his Williard family. Cooper is a great help to all of those around him. Many times, you don't even have to ask him to tidy up the room. He's always picking up pencils and anything else that falls on the floor, just like at home in his bedroom, I bet. Cooper can often be spotted lending a helping hand to his classmates or anyone else in need. He is friendly and caring to all of those around him. He sets high expectations for himself, and he strives to do his absolute best at all times. We also have another first grader, Madeline Stahlnecker. Madeline is very respectful and a kind soul who takes responsibility for her own learning and treats others how she'd like to be treated. Some days are easier than others, but she always shows up and makes the most of each day at school. We are fortunate to have Madeline at Williard. Congratulations, Madeline. Next, we have Mr. Dockerty, leading in his prized possessions from West Main, although I don't know about that jacket, but okay. First, from the third grade, we have Kennedy Ratchford, who is nominated by her teacher, Ms. Tataro. Kennedy is an excellent role model for all students. She is courteous to her peers and takes her academics very seriously. She shows leadership skills when working in groups and is always willing to help anyone with a problem in reading and math. She also showed great leadership with girls on the run. Kennedy was very enthusiastic and supportive of all the girls and their success in the race. She is a model West Main student. Congratulations, Kennedy Ratchford. We also have Ezekiel, or Zeke Osborne, nominated by Ms. Danyanchi and Ms. Chikic. Zeke is an excellent student in class and always does his best work. He is respectful to his peers, his teachers, and staff members, showing kindness to everyone he encounters. He goes out of his way to take care of our classroom without ever having been asked to. For example, he stacks the chairs, makes sure the floors are picked up at the end of the day, and he encourages others to do their best as well. Zeke is a model student that we are proud to have on our team. Congratulations, Zeke and Kennedy. Next, from the middle school with their principal, Ms. Burwell, we have Jordan Treago, who is a seventh grader at Brown Middle School, and Eli Brzezowski, who's a fifth grader. And I'm going to start with Jordan. Jordan is always prepared for class and is a kind-hearted student who not only brings a positive attitude to the class with her considerate demeanor, but also actively participates, showcasing her commitment to both learning and fostering a collaborative learning environment. Jordan is a true example of what it means to be respectful, responsible, and in control, and we are proud to recognize her as a BMS student game changer. Congratulations, Jordan. Next, we have Eli Brzezowski, a fifth grader. He comes to class with a smile on his face every day, just like now. He always does his best and puts forth a sincere effort. He takes what he has learned and applies it and makes corrections and connections. He is most certainly an outstanding role model for all other students. He is kind, caring, and honest, and it's a pleasure to have him in the classroom. We are proud to recognize Eli as a student game changer from Brown Middle School. Congratulations, Jordan and Eli. And from the high school, with Mr. Lane, and I know there are teachers in the audience, Ms. Chrislip, we have two young men, Charles Ford and Chris Tresnick. I'm going to start with Charles. Charles is the epitome of the word helper. Charles has become a helper since day one of high school. He comes to school every day with a smile and a kind word. He delivers birdie bags to the empty unit weekly. Charles, on his own, began staying at the end of each lunch period to assist the cafeteria and custodial staff in throwing away trash, returning trays, and tearing down all the lunch tables. Mr. Harper, our head custodian, raves about Charles. He says his work ethic and attitude are outstanding. He has also completed two Acelis courses for two credits already this year. Charles is a great example of being responsible, respectful, and in control. Congratulations, Charles. And next to him is his buddy, Chris Tresnick. Chris came to the RHS, BRC, after really not liking middle school all that much. He said he wanted to do better once he got to high school, and he has. He volunteers to deliver birdie bags for delivery. He stays to help clean up in the lunchroom daily. He shreds weekly for the school. He likes to help. He's completed one Acelis course for one core credit and is close to completing his second. He has demonstrated a great work ethic in the classroom and when we volunteer at the Center of Hope every week. He told me he loves volunteering there. He has shown it's very possible to get his attitude and behavior in line with good choices and is doing a great job at RHS. Congratulations, Chris and Charles. Thank you both. So what we're going to do right now is we're going to take a quick, operative word, quick, brief, interlude, and go out into the cafeteria and get pictures, and I'm going to like orchestrate the whole thing. So I'll be loud, but we'll get it done quickly and orderly. All right, we'll meet you out there.
Business meeting, we will have the superintendent's update.
Thank you. During the October 2023 regular Board of Education meeting, several members of the community provided public comments on both agenda and non-agenda items. The request that responses be made in a public forum was made, and the board wants to respect that request. So in collaboration with me, we're going to share the responses that were provided to each community member, not in total, but in synopsis, all right? One of the comments was related to the Board of Education meetings, how the agenda is organized, the time of the meeting, that type of stuff. Well, actually, there was two that were related to that. The Board will hold a meeting in January. It's an organizational meeting where the dates, times, location of the Board meetings for the next calendar year are determined, and those requests will be addressed at that time. One comment was related to the current football coach and the overall status of the program, and unfortunately, we can't speak about personnel considerations, but we can share that all of your information goes into those decisions. And a separate but related comment was how are those coaching positions made available when there's a vacancy? They are posted internally, and then if there are no internal applicants for the position, the head coach is able to recruit and interview candidates for that position following. One was related to the GPA requirement. As of December 2nd, 2019, the Board of Education did approve Resolution 11223, which raised the minimum GPA from a 1.0 to a 1.25 for the 2021 school year and to 1.5 for every school year after that. The Board is now revisiting that to see if they want to change that minimum going forward. One comment was related to traffic at West Main, and we are working with the city to see what we can do about that. And finally, there was a concern raised about the difficulty of non-custodial parents accessing academic records and information. The Ohio Revised Code is what tells us what we can and can't do with a non-custodial parent. However, non-custodial parents do have the right to educational records, they just have to go to the school and ask for that. So that answers the questions that were brought up during that time. I do have one other thing that I want to update the community about, and that is, we are conducting, the Board, or the district is conducting a state of the schools and listening tour. It's an invitation to hear from the superintendent, from the treasurer, about the state of the schools, a review of the district's five-year financial forecasts and strategic plan, and then, at the end, an opportunity to ask questions, share concerns, identify barriers, build rapport with community members and key stakeholders. There are four total dates for that. You'll get them in your weekly district updates that I've been sending home, but they are Tuesday, January 9th, at the Ravenna Assembly of God at 6:00. Thursday, January 11th, at the Center of Hope at 6:00. January 16th, at the Ravenna Township Hall at 6:00. And Wednesday, January 17th, at Ravenna High School, also at 6:00. So there's four opportunities to hear that, so I'm hopeful that one of those will fit into some everybody's schedule. And that is my update. Thank you.
So next, we will have a building spotlight from Mrs. Coleman.
Good evening. This is Julie Ziegler. She is one of the teachers at the preschool, and she is here to help with our presentation. First thing we'd like to do is thank you for allowing us to be here. And as part of our thanks you, we're giving a bookmark that says, "Thank you for being part of my story," so you can remember what an important part you are to every preschooler's story. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about the preschool, something we're very proud to share. There we go. The mission, thank you. The mission of the entire school district is Ravenna, an inclusive learning community, embracing diversity, and equipping all students for success. So what does the preschool do to help with that mission?
Whoops, I did the wrong thing.
You did.
Can you fix it for me? Sorry, which button am I supposed to put?
The forward and backward.
Ah, okay, I'll do it right now.
So last spring, Lee Smith and I hit the road, went to Skills, we went to King Kennedy, we went to PMHA, and we talked to several people about the fact that we have a preschool and that we want your kiddos to come to our preschool. We reached out to Maya Sanders and Sharon Sanders, and they helped us develop this cute brochure that I'm sure you've seen around town. It's been in every business, and we were able to recruit students that are more representative of our community. So that's what our brochure looked like, and we were able to get some students in so that when they walk into preschool, they can see that I'm surrounded by a better representation of my community. So we're really proud of that. We're very proud of our preschool team. We have seven classrooms, six classrooms full of students. Out of all of those classrooms, we have seven teachers, nine paraprofessionals, our own speech therapists, and between all of us who work at the preschool, we have 322 years of experience, 14 bachelor's degrees, and nine master's degrees, something we're very proud to share with our community. We are a five-star step-up-to-quality program. That means we have to accumulate points. We get points for having professionals in charge of our students. We get points for using state-approved curriculum, for having a safe environment, for having programs that not only support students with special needs, but also students who are gifted. So we do strive for those five stars. Our person that's in charge of making sure that we are always on track with that is Mrs. Ziegler, and I appreciate her so much for that. Mrs. Ziegler's going to talk a little bit about all of our services.
The preschool has a lot of students who have an IEP, but we also do some interventions. Before we would get to an IEP, we offer physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy. We have social-emotional groups that are run by our school psychologist, and some of our students don't attend our preschool. We call those kids itinerant. In the state, we're required to offer a continuum of services. Some kids may be in their home, and I would go visit them there. They might be in other schools within the town or nearby. I've gone, you know, to childcare places like Noah's Ark, which is in Rooks Town, or to Head Start, to Tots, all of the places around here. And some kids just come in and visit us to get their services. They don't come in for a classroom, but they just come in and see professionals.
So the second part of our presentation is about our family outreach that we started this year. We are spending one day a month with our families, and so we'd like to talk about the opportunities so far. We started the year with individual family orientations instead of having just one big open house come in, meet the teacher. We felt like these are three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and parents are nervous about sending their kids to us, so we invited them to individual orientations, and that is something we will continue for sure. We then, instead of having an open house, waited till October to have an art show so that students could have the opportunity to show off all of the wonderful things that they do at the preschool. We felt like we do all these fun crafts and things to support therapy and other items, and parents never get to see it. So we had an art show, and that was so well-attended. We then, in no, September, we went to Mila's Hope and Rowan's Dream Playground trip. We did this on a Friday. We had an incredible turnout. Families could either come with us on the bus or meet us there. The best part about this trip wasn't even being at the playground, it was watching the parents interact and the kids get to know each other because these are the children that they're going to grow up with. You know, on the way back on the bus, parents were sharing phone numbers, talking about helping with rides, and that just made us really happy because that's what we had hoped would happen. We then had a harvest festival in lieu of a Halloween ceremony, or, you know, the big party. It's a little much for young ones, so we developed a harvest festival last year with the support of our PTO, and you can see just the morning group, all the volunteers who showed up. The parents were incredible, so it was great to have them helping us out. We then traveled the next month to see the Bright Star Theater right here in our amazing auditorium at the high school. We wanted our families to be able to see what is here at the high school. We also wanted to make sure that kids had the opportunity to see live performances, and so we invited the kindergarten through fourth grade to come with us as well. So it was an incredible day. We then, just recently, invited families in for a family fun learning event that Mrs. Ziegler's going to talk a little bit about.
Yep, we had, our event was focused on how to play with your child using a variety of simple play equipment. Each family that came, or actually, each student got a bag like this. It has cards in it that tell you how to play with your kid with different things, and the bag has in it a book. There's a card about what to do when you're reading a book. It has crayons and a notebook. It has bubbles. It has a ball that, it's flat, but that's a ball. And let's see, what else is in there? Oh, Play-Doh. And then, our sixth station was called Soccer Shots, and you can see a couple of our kids there in the in-control position with their soccer ball. So we had a good turnout for that also, and I would like to thank the Board for letting us make this schedule change this year so that we have this time on Fridays to work with families. I think it's been really valuable.
So upcoming field trips in January, we are headed to the Akron Children's Museum. Really looking forward to that. And we are also headed to the Beach Creek Botanical Gardens and Nature Preserve in the spring. So we are very proud of the family outreach that we've done, and I'm really proud of the staff for the way they've embraced it. So I think we just have questions. Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the board?
Just a comment. I also serve on the Portage Learning Centers Board. They operate the Head Start and early Head Start programs. And one of the things that I've always been very interested in is watching and learning from the family engagement. At this age, it's critical and it's very important, but seeing some of the neat things that you're doing and the attendance that you appear to have, that is, that's huge. So the effort that you put into the family engagement, it definitely is going to translate into lifelong behavior. So thank you for that.
Thanks for commenting on that because we want our families as early as possible to know what great things are happening here. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mrs. Zieger.
So if we can have the treasurer's update.
Just a couple of quick updates about the finance department to get us started. First of all, our fiscal year 2023 unaudited financial statements are now available. They were filed with the State Auditor's Office on November 27th, which was the deadline to file, and they are now available on our website. Our employee benefits open enrollment period ended on November 30th. I think we got some excellent results this year with people using our PlanSource online benefits management tool. So we'll be working with them to get them started in their new benefits packages starting January 1. Next, I just wanted to remind the board that there is a finance committee meeting on Wednesday, November 13th at 3:00. At that meeting, we will discuss the calendar year-end fiscal processes that the department takes care of, the review of a draft tax budget that will be on the January board meeting agenda, and then review the fiscal year 2023 unaudited financial statements. And then I did want to highlight a couple of items that are on tonight's board agenda under the treasurer's reports and recommendations. First, there's a recommendation to approve a property tax exemption and compensation agreement with MCSM LLC and Spring Seal, Inc. These are not new to the Ravenna Board of Education. You've seen these before. The City of Ravenna actually notifies us of property tax exemption properties, and the Board of Education is asked to approve those. And in working with our legal counsel, we're able to negotiate a compensation agreement with that company then that still provides the same amount of revenue had the company been paying their property taxes to the school district. So they get a break from the city and the other part of their property taxes, but they do still pay the portion to the school district through that compensation agreement. And I did want to point out that the agreement includes Maplewood Career Center on that, and that is not unusual. So typically, the board would include that. It doesn't cost us anything. It's simply a part of the agreement with the company because Maplewood could not do their own compensation agreements. So we would take care of that on their behalf. And then finally, the last item that I wanted to highlight is the recommendation to approve a resolution to proceed with an emergency levy for the $2.7 million a year for five years. And the board had previously received some information about that. And I do want to go through in a little bit more detail again why that recommendation is being made and what it looks like financially. So I'm going to go on to the next slide. Board members have a copy of the presentation in front of them, and it starts out with the, again, a review of the five-year forecast. The Board of Education approved that five-year forecast at the October 23rd regular board meeting. And that forecast showed deficit spending. Each year of the five-year forecast showed a low cash balance in fiscal year 2025, which was year two, and then a negative $2 million cash balance in fiscal 2026, which is year three, and then beyond. But those two years triggered the attention of the Ohio Department of Education and workforce. And so they have reached out to us to talk to us about what our plans are going forward for addressing those three issues: the deficit spending, the low balance, and then the negative balances. On November 7th, the community did not approve a 6.9 mil five-year current expense levy that would have generated $2,674,000 annually for five years, beginning with the first collection in February 2024. So that levy would have provided enough new revenue to have addressed the deficits in the five-year forecast. So that would have resolved some of our challenges going forward. But now we are continuing to move forward. The Board of Education is being asked tonight to approve a resolution of necessity, which is the second resolution in the process. Or, I'm sorry, the next step the board took, though, moving forward was to approve that resolution of necessity at the special board meeting on November 20th. So there are two resolutions involved in this process. November 20th, this board took the first action and, at that time, reviewed two recommendations. And the recommendation was to either approve one, both, or neither of the resolutions. This board approved both, going forward, both an emergency and a current expense. And I think going forward then tonight, the recommendation really is to take a look closer at that emergency levy. But let me give you some more information here. Advancing to the next slide is the five-year forecast summary. This is what you saw and approved in October. So you're familiar with this summary, and this kind of highlights those deficit spending years on line 6.01, and then the cash balances on line 7.02. This levy did not assume, or, I'm sorry, this forecast did not assume new levies on line 13.01. So had that levy passed in November, we would have amended this. But as you can see, going forward, we're still anticipating $2 million deficit in fiscal 2026. Again, so moving forward, the board is considering going back on the ballot. The option to be on the March 19th, 2024 primary election ballot required a response to three pieces of information, the first being the type of levy, whether it be an emergency or a current expense. The board could move forward with one, both, or neither of those. Again, the amount of revenue to be generated from either of these levies. The emergency levy was determined that $2.7 million would be the flat amount raised each year, beginning with the first collection in February 2025. Or for a current expense levy, the determination was made for 6.9 mils. Given our current valuation that was certified by the county auditor, and the board members have a copy of that certification for both of these resolutions of necessity. But it shows the current valuation for the district for 2024 as 3 million, or, I'm sorry, So again, that 6.9 mils would generate $2,701,000 per year, beginning with the first collection in February 2025. So you see, there's really only $1,000 a year difference between the emergency or the current expense levy for new revenue amount. Again, the difference is how it's stated on the ballot, and you have the certifications in front of you for both of them. I thought it was interesting that the county, county auditor increased total valuation for the school district only 1% this year. So if you recall, last year's valuation was $387 million. It went up to $391 million. Next year, 2024, is actually our update year. So we should see property values increase a little bit more, maybe based on some of the market activity next year, and then that'll be for the collection the following year. But I did put the calculation of how you get from mils to the $2.7 million on the slide. And again, we agreed that the length of time for any new revenue would be five years because, again, it ties to our strategic plan of five years and our five-year forecast. So the next slide shows you the impact of new local revenue. And this shows you first collection in 2025. That's our fiscal year. It would actually be collected in February of 2025, which is the second half of the fiscal year. So we get a half a collection that year, and then we would assume full collections of the $2.7 million the next year. So you see, it does have an impact, a significant impact, on our unreserved fund balance. But I think the recommendation here is still to look at opportunities to reduce expenditures in fiscal '25 because that collection now would be delayed till 2025 rather than 2024. So I do want to highlight the next steps and the upcoming board actions for financial impacts going forward. In December, at this meeting, this board will be asked to approve a resolution to proceed with the emergency levy on March 19th in that primary election. Again, an emergency levy is to generate operating revenues for emergency expenses of the district. Those are operating expenses of the district. In January, this board will be asked to hold a budget hearing and approve a resolution for the fiscal year 2025 tax budget. In February, then, as a result of the tax budget being approved and submitted to the county auditor's office, this board will be asked to approve the tax rates certified by the Portage County Auditor. In March, after the March 19th election, this board will be asked to approve a plan to reduce the five-year forecast deficit. Again, the forecast that was submitted in October triggered an alert from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, and they have reached out to us to ask us what our deficit reduction plan is. Obviously, our first point of that plan would be to generate new revenue through that emergency levy. So the deadline to file that plan, to have that plan approved by the Board of Education and file that, is actually February 29th. Next year's a leap year. So February 29th. But when I explained to the ODE consultant that we were planning to generate some new revenue, and we would not know if we were getting that until after March 19th, she recommended that we file for a one-month extension for that purpose. So that lines up very well, then. We will know then in March if our deficit reduction plan will include that new revenue or not. And then, just in the event that, either way, really, if it includes the new revenue or not, April would be the time that the board would approve a reduction in force for the May 1st notification deadline that's required by our collective bargaining agreement. So in an effort to, you know, reduce our costs because that collection has now been delayed until 2025, we want to look at, you know, all of our staffing again next year, our contracts, where we have opportunities for cost savings. So wanted to include that deadline on here in the next steps. That's all I have for you. I did include a lot of photos as well from the preschool, my presentations, so Beth may have recognized some of those from her Harvest Festival. And then at the West Park Halloween Parade, so. But if any board members have any questions, we can address them now, or we can address them through the reports for approval.
Candy, if we go on to March primary, is there any charges that we have to cover to do that? Or since it's a regular primary, is there a cost to us?
Every time the board puts an issue on a ballot, there's a cost. The county auditor collects that directly when, through our property taxes. So they just automatically deduct that payment out of our property taxes. It's, the cost is actually split by the number of things on the ballot. So the more things on the ballot, the less the district's portion of that election. So for a primary, I think it would be less than if we were the only thing on the ballot.
Thank you. Thank you. If we can move on to reports of the board, starting with the Maplewood report from Mrs. Seaman.
I have no report for tonight. Our board usually meets after the Maplewood board, and this time, we're meeting early, so we have not had our meeting yet. But I will make sure you get the minutes from the meeting.
Thank you. Ravenna Parks and Recreation Report from Mrs. Dennison.
No report this evening.
Thank you. If we will continue with reports of the treasurer.
Thank you. The first item on this consent agenda, which includes items 1 through 5, are the approval of the minutes from both the October 23rd regular business meeting and the November 20th special meeting. The second item includes a list of gifts and donations that you see in your agenda. The third item includes financial reports from the month of October and November. Actually, I believe only October is on there, I'm sorry. So it does say financial reports from October, November, but only October was included. So you're only voting on October this evening. We haven't quite finished with November, and you'll see those at the January meeting along with the December. You have, item number four is an approval of a then-and-now payment. And item number five is an approval of a transfer from the Permanent Improvement Fund to the Debt Service Fund. Again, these are just the movement of PI funds that the district collected in order to pay for some debt that was paid from Fund 2, but collected in Fund 3.
We need to vote on 1 through 5 first, and then 6 is a standalone.
Yes, this is the consent agenda for items 1 through 5.
1 through 4. Consent agenda is 1 through 4.
Is approval of the transfer not a part of the consent agenda?
You have a vote listed up here under approval of then-and-now.
Okay.
Was that a typo?
I might be wrong.
I'm sorry, because I use a different agenda, but let me, let me check.
I don't have my computer, so you could be...
It's not on the online one. It's on the paper copy that I printed out, but the one that we have online does not have the vote until after.
Okay.
Item 5? Yes. Yeah, I'm looking at the printed agenda copy, and it goes, items 1 through 5 is part of the consent agenda.
So can we have a motion to approve financial items A1 through 5?
Mr. Tantamonia?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun? Item number 6, and item number... Item number 6 and item number 7 should be considered together. So again, this is your opportunity to select one, both, or neither. These are the resolutions to proceed with the levy on the March 19th ballot. So item number 6 is our recommendation to approve the resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors of the school district of the question of an additional tax levy for the purpose of providing for emergency requirements of the school district pursuant to Sections 5705.194 to 5705.197 of the Revised Code. Again, the emergency levy establishes a fixed amount of new revenue for each year. So that was the $2.7 million per year for five years. I would recommend that levy proceed rather than item 7, which you also have on the agenda, which is a resolution pursuant to Sections 5705.21 of the Revised Code submitting to the electors of the Ravenna School District the question of the levy of an additional tax for the purpose of current expenses. And again, that levy would appear as a 6.9 mil levy for five years, which would amount to $2,701,000 a year.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board? The treasurer has recommended that we proceed with financial item number 6 for the emergency levy. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I would want to go ahead with the emergency.
That's good. Roll call, please.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
And then if the board chooses not to proceed with the current expense levy, we would just simply not make a motion for that. So if there's no motion for that, we'll go on to item number 8, which again is a standalone resolution. And this is the real property tax exemption for MCSM LLC and Spring Seal Inc., along with the compensation agreement.
Do we have a motion to approve financial item number 8?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
We can move on to reports and recommendations of the superintendent and other administrators.
Thank you. First, we have, Mr. Rivlin is going to present on the policy. We have a first reading, a second reading, action to rescind some current policies, and then an annual, to approve the annual review. You have a chart that he gave you so that you can kind of go along with him as he summarizes this for the board. And student board members, you have this as well, okay?
Thank you. We do have two new policies. As always, these have been recommended from Neola. We did meet with the Neola representative to talk about each of these, and then we had a policy committee meeting last week to review them as well. The first two are new, and they'll have to have a reading today and also at the next board meeting because you have to have two readings to adopt new board policies. The first one is Policy 5337, Care of Students with Seizure Disorders. Beginning this school year, school districts are required to create a seizure action plan for all students who have been diagnosed with active seizure disorder. The plan is developed in consultation with the parents or legal guardians, and then must be reviewed annually. These new policies have been developed, and you'll hear a lot of this tonight, from House Bill 33. That was the latest budget bill that went through, and a lot of these policies pertain to that. The second new reading, or second new reading is Policy 6240, Board of Revision Complaints and Countercomplaints. This new policy is being offered as a means to comply with the statutory provisions of House Bill 126. In this policy, districts are limited in their ability to challenge tax valuation properties in the district. Boards now have a limited role in real estate valuation appeals, and the policy authorizes the treasurer to act within the limits of the law. Are there any questions on the two new? Number two is either replacements or renewals of policies. They will only need one reading tonight to go into adoption. The first is Policy 0113. This is the address of the school board. That just needs updated with the new address at Summit Street. Policy 0141.2, Conflict of Interest. This bylaw has been revised to include the expanded scope of potential conflicts that must be disclosed by the board member and require a board member to refrain from debating or voting upon certain contracts. That comes from new Ohio law and must be adopted to maintain accurate policies. Policy 2623.02 is the third grade reading guarantee. As you may or may not know, a third grade reading guarantee for many years, if a student did not meet a certain requirement on their third grade reading test, either in the fall or spring, they were to be retained in third grade. Or House Bill 33, the budget bill, has changed a lot of those rulings. The budget bill eliminated student retention under the third grade reading guarantee. Beginning in '24-'25 school year, parents will have the authority to request that their child be promoted after consulting with the building principal and reading teacher, even if their children are not reading at grade level. It also prohibits schools from retaining students this year for failure to achieve the required score on the third grade reading assessment during the past year unless parents request that the students be retained. Other changes also include a requirement that districts provide reading intervention services to students until they are reading at grade level, a requirement that districts provide high dosage tutoring that meets certain statutory requirements, a directive that intervention services be aligned with the newly defined science of reading, and in addition to the notice of parents when their children are reading below grade level, all things that we are currently doing. We've got three policies that are together. On the next one, Policy 3120.08, Employment of Personnel for Co-Curricular/Extracurricular Activities, Policy 4120.08, Employment of Personnel for Co-Curricular/Extracurricular Activities, and Policy 8120, Volunteers. Under the new budget bill, House Bill 33, this changes some of the qualifications for either initial or renewal pupil activity and coaching permits. They are to complete a sudden cardiac arrest training course approved by the Department of Health. They also must complete a student mental health training course, which is new, approved by the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. And they must also take training in brain trauma and brain injury management, as well as symptoms of concussion and head injuries, as reported, which was required also under the previous version of the law. So several changes that coaches and activity coordinators are going to have to do for those new permits. Policy 5320, Immunization. This policy reflects changes to immunization requirements, adjusting age and grade level groupings, and vaccines as recommended by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. We get a schedule each year of the different grades that they have to have those immunizations, and they've adjusted the schedule. Policy 5330, Use of Medications. House Bill 558 was passed into law in January, dealing with storage and usage of naloxone, which is also known as Narcan in schools. Language in these policies made available for careful consideration, discussion with the district's board and legal counsel. We've been advised by our legal counsel that our fire and police will carry these, and are recommending only the language cleanup in the policy, not the storage of Narcan here at the school. And the language changes are very simple. They're changing he or she to the student, and that's the only changes that are in this policy. Policy 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act. On December 29, 2022, President Biden signed into action the Pump Act, which expands the rights granted by the Break Time for Nursing Mothers Act to include exempt employees of covered employees. So this would grant all salaried employees, such as teachers and administrators, as well as exempt employees, to provide reasonable break time to express milk in a private location that is not a bathroom. The next policy, 7440, Facility Security. This policy has been updated to include an optional list of security measures. You can see those in the policies that have attached in green or red that are utilized throughout school facilities. Language has also been added to declare that staff, students, and visitors who intentionally circumvent, interfere with, or disable security measures, systems, or devices may be subject to discipline, including termination of employment, suspension, or expulsion from work or school, or face criminal charges. Policy 8210 is on the school calendar under House Bill 33, again, the budget bill. We previously were allowed to use Blizzard bags to make up time missed from school. They have now eliminated Blizzard bags, Blizzard bags as an option to make up calamity days, and they've replaced it with a new option to provide virtual online education to students when schools are closed due to disease epidemic, hazardous weather conditions, law enforcement emergencies, and probability of school buses or other equipment necessary to the school's operations, damages to a school building, or other temporary circumstances due to utility failure rendering the building unsafe for use. So I think we're really prepared for that. Since COVID has happened, we are well on the path to making sure that our online education is provided. Policy 8330, Student Records. New law was enacted under House Bill 33, again, the budget bill, that requires school districts to forward a student's cumulative records to a new public or non-public school upon request within five school days. You can withhold those if the outstanding debt is more than $2,500. Policy 8600, Transportation, and Policy 8650 are together, again, in the budget bill, House Bill 33. After October of this year, school districts will be permitted to transport non-pub students to and from school using a van. We're going to put this into policy because that's the law, but because we transport a large enough amount, we cannot transport those students in a van. Also, as of October, the district will be required to provide transportation as related services to students with disabilities who live in the district and attend non-public school if the school district has provided with supporting documentation from that child's IEP. The law now declares that students may not be delivered late to school. It says in the budget bill that it allows the delivery of students up to 30 minutes before school start time and pickup time. And after that, House Bill 33 says that violating those transportation rules would put us out of compliance. Noncompliance occurs five consecutive days or 10 days within a school year, to which one of the following violations occur: students are dropped off at least 30 minutes late to school, or students are picked up more than 30 minutes late at the end of the school day, or the students are not transported at all because the bus does not show up, or the district is considered noncompliant with any other transportation requirements under Chapter 3327. If those occur and the noncompliance happens, the district has one week to submit a corrective action plan to the state, and for any subsequent occurrences, the Department of Educational Workforce will then withhold 25% of the district's transportation funding for each day of noncompliance. If two or more consecutive occurrences are permitted before the DEW withholds, then 100% of the district's transportation funding. Funds will then be withheld until the DEW determines the district is back in compliance, and that count then resets each school year. Policy 9160, Public Attendance at School Events. Again, from the budget bill, House Bill 33, just says that any athletic events, we must now also take cash as payment for tickets. Before, we were told to move to a credit card-only system, and now the state has asked that we offer both credit card and cash options at those athletic events. Policy 9211, District Support Organizations. This declares that school employees and board members will not manage or have access to funds of a direct support organization or serve as a voting member or officer of any of those support organizations. Policy 9270, Equivalent Education Outside of School and Participation Extracurricular for Students Not Enrolled in the District. Again, from the budget bill, modifies the law governing homeschool students' education in Ohio. Basically, before, they were asked to turn in a curriculum and be approved for homeschool, and all those have been withdrawn. All that the parent has to do now for homeschool is to simply notify the school, and the school has to reply within five days that they've been notified of homeschooling. Parents are no longer required to meet certain qualifications to instruct their children at home, and do not need to provide a minimum number of instructional hours as well. And the law also modifies academic eligibility for home-educated students who participate in any extracurricular activities. Okay, on number three, I'm sorry, any questions on those revisions?
On Policy 9211, the district support organizations?
Yes.
Do we currently have any school employees who serve on these district support organizations? First of all, what would we consider a district support organization? Would that be like our booster clubs and things like that, that have treasures?
I do not believe we currently have any employees in this situation. It could be anything that would be donating money towards our schools. So a foundation. I know that, like, our chamber provides scholarships to our students, but they're not providing financial assistance, so I believe that those organizations, as well as our Parks Board and Maplewood, would not qualify under that provision. Did that answer your question, Mrs. Dennison?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Any other questions on those revisions? Okay, number three, we are asking to rescind Policy 2262. We currently used to, we currently do not have a childcare program anymore. We currently only have a preschool program, and so we're asking to rescind that policy since we no longer offer a childcare program. And then finally, on number four, we have three policies that need to be reviewed annually. Policy 2111, Parent and Family Engagement. We are not recommending any changes. This policy reflects the importance of engagement and communication with families. We have reviewed this the last two years and have made subsequent changes as needed. It is, also gives, or it's based on guidance from the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and the district will continue to strive to build relationships with its families. Policy 2261.01, Parent and Family Member Participation in Title I Programs. Again, this is by law. No changes were recommended from Neola. This policy is a reference to the guidelines that each district must follow in order to receive federal funds for Title I-supported programs. We go to several conferences a year to make sure we're in compliance, and we're not recommending any changes to that. And finally, Policy 2623, Student Assessment and Academic Intervention Services. Again, Neola recommends no policy change here, but it refers to assessment, data, summer school, and communication of those assessments by law. Can I answer any questions on any of the policies that we've reviewed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivlin.
Thank you, Mr. Ione. Then we will need a motion to approve Business Recommendations A one through four.
So moved.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Next, we have three, three resolutions. It's part of a consent agenda, five, six, and seven. They deal with extracurriculars or field trips. One is to approve the walking club at Brown Middle School. One is to approve an extended field trip, an overnight field trip by the Ravenna Band to Toronto, and one is to approve the indoor track and field club.
Can we have a motion to approve Business Recommendations A five through seven?
She'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Can I ask a question? Can I get a question?
Yes.
Mrs. Burwell, when would the, when would this walking club be? After school? That's all I wanted to know.
The roll call is Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Next, the consent agenda for numbers eight, nine, and ten. They are all some type of an agreement. The first is a service agreement with Applewood Centers for onsite education services. There's also a payment in lieu of transportation agreement on number nine for four of our students. And number ten is to approve the agreement for student standard, standard student data privacy so that we can make sure that the vendors that we use protect our student data going forward.
Can we have a motion to approve Business Recommendations A eight through ten?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Next is a standalone, number eleven, is to ask for you to authorize the award of a contract with Klein Mechanical for the HVAC modifications for the rest of the schools. This is contingent upon financing. So we, because the bid is time-sensitive, we have to accept it. We have to move forward, but we don't necessarily have to move forward with the actual work until we figure out the financing.
And the board will be asked to approve that financing structure at a future meeting.
Right.
Can we have a motion to approve Business Recommendation A eleven?
So moved.
Can we have a second? So moved, or second, I'm sorry, second. Any questions or discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
When we, when will we get a little bit more information on this?
We're, we are waiting to, to, we are working with the banks currently right now to find out about finances.
And will this cover which buildings?
West Main, Williard, and West Park. And, yeah.
Should I continue with the roll call vote? Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Next is the consent agenda for twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. They all deal with the organizational meeting. We want to establish the date for the organizational meeting of January eighth, and we also want to appoint a president pro tem as our current president's tenure is expiring. Well, expiring, you know what I mean? And then we want to appoint a member to the Maplewood Career Center Board of Education as Roger Bolts is rolling off. So it is a consent agenda, but I, I think. Well, we, you just have to, I guess, do the motion and then have a discussion for the third one before we can vote.
And I'm working for my paper now because there's something with, wrong with this. So if there's like a mismatch, I may be a little off.
So, so there's three things. The organizational meeting for January eighth, the president pro tem, and you, we're asking for a nomination for that person. And then we're also asking for a nomination for the Maplewood Career Center. So we have to motion.
Yes.
And second it right, and then have a discussion. Okay.
So can we have a motion? Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I move we appoint Pam Calhoun to be president pro tem.
And then item fourteen, I did speak with Mike Wazniewski. He is interested in representing the board on the Maplewood Board of Education. So I appoint Mike Wazniewski.
All right, we just need to vote then on those three things.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Tantamonia motioned, and Mrs. Seaman seconded the motion. Pam Calhoun was nominated by Joanne Seaman to serve as the president pro tem at the January first, two thousand twenty-four. I'm sorry, January.
Eighth.
Eighth, two thousand twenty-four organizational meeting. And Mike Wazniewski was nominated by Pam Calhoun to serve as the representative to the Maplewood Career Center Board of Education. So the roll call vote is Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
All right, now we're moving into, thank you. Now we're moving into personnel considerations. First is a consent agenda, A one, two, and three. The retirement of an elementary school teacher, Mrs. Bolts, the employment of after-school tutors at West Main, and the approval of employment, for the employment of substitute teachers for the district.
Can we have a motion to approve Personnel Considerations A one through three?
She'll move.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
The next is also a consent agenda. It involves B one, two, and three, and C one. They are all dealing with supplementals or volunteers. So we are looking at approving the employment of the coaches that are listed below, amending the employment resolution for the coaches that were listed below so that those coaches, they just kind of shuffled around within the assignments, and then accept the resignation of our cheer advisor at the middle school, and approving a volunteer coach for bowling.
Can we have a motion to approve Personnel Considerations B one, two, three, and C one?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
We have several classified on a consent agenda, D one through nine, one of which might require some discussion. The resolution, one is to accept the resignation of an educational aide. One is to approve the employment of an educational aide. One is to approve an unpaid leave of absence for the third consecutive time. One is to approve the resignation of a bus driver. One is to approve the employment of a bus driver, another, well, for two bus drivers, to change the hours of a different bus driver, the resignation, which is really a retirement of one of our maintenance workers, and then the following substitute employees.
Can we have a motion to approve Personnel Considerations D one through nine?
She'll move. Second.
Questions or discussion? So I do have a question.
I, well, I was going to ask about an extension. It says a request for unpaid leave of absence extension. Oh, she requested it on November twenty-eighth. Is that what that means?
Yes, she, she requested the extension after two previous unpaid ones and after a day of not recording.
And then there's no return date provided.
None.
So it's an open-ended.
Open-ended, okay. Can we pull that one until we talk about that?
We absolutely can pull three out, right, Candy?
Yes, so your consent agenda would include items one through nine with the exception of item three.
So can, I requested the motions to approve Personnel Considerations D one through nine, and now with the exception of item three. We had the motion, we had the second. Can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Do I move forward then?
Yes.
Okay, on number ten, I'm asking that you approve the employment of substitute employees for, as an educational aide. Mrs. Calhoun, you need to abstain.
Can we have a motion to approve Personnel Consideration, number ten? Second? Joanne, oh, okay, sorry. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Abstain.
Then if you look at Resolutions eleven, twelve, or Agenda Items eleven, twelve, and thirteen, these are food handlers accepting the resignation of two food handlers and the employment of one.
Can we have a motion to approve Personnel Considerations A eleven through thirteen?
So moved.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
I think Mr. Tantamonia has to abstain.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Tantamonia, did you abstain from that vote?
It's actually okay because I'm making the res, I'm making the, I'm making the recommendations.
Okay.
It's okay.
Okay.
So we're good. Okay, so the recommendation's coming from the superintendent.
So moving on, do we have anyone signed up to speak? It looks like we do have two people signed up to speak on non-agenda items. With this, if you could start by introducing yourself, what your topic is, and then each person who's speaking will have three minutes to speak. We will start with Joyce Torres. Doesn't have a topic listed here, says sub. So if we could have Joyce Torres speak?
Thank you very much for having me. My name is Joyce Torres. I am a school bus driver retired as of May twenty-three, and I returned back to Ravenna Schools in August due to a great need for bus drivers. And I am also an on-bus instructor. So I see that you have approved three of my trainees for school bus drivers, which I enjoy teaching people how to be safe driving a school bus. So I want to thank you for that. When our bus driver's contract was drawn up, Jeannie Knapp was my supervisor, Dennis Honkala was the superintendent, and also in attendance was Ben Riblin, the treasurer at the time, and the attorney. Jeannie Knapp appreciated her subs. I am a sub-driver along with an on-bus instructor right now, and I speak for all of our sub-drivers, not just for me. When this contract was made, was drawn up, it was, Jeannie made a, made a point to add the sub-drivers. Not really add to the contract, but her point was to make sure that the sub-drivers were appreciated. And right now, our subs make sixteen dollars and forty cents an hour driving a twenty-six-thousand-pound vehicle loaded with children. And I enjoy doing that as our, all of our bus drivers. But our subs, they enjoy it as well, but it's nice to be appreciated. Jeannie had suggested to make sure that the sub-rate was on step one of the contract. Now it's not in the contract, but the step one would, would make the amount for the sub-driver to be seventeen dollars and nineteen cents an hour. I am respectfully asking that you agree with that. I understand that they were not, this was not in the contract, but we shook hands on it. I was the president of our union, which I'm not in a union any longer, but a handshake is an agreement to me. And I would respectfully ask that you honor that handshake with adjusting the sub-rate to step one with yearly raises to follow. Our subs are important. They help keep our, our buses rolling, and our mechanic is driving, supervisor is driving, Matt Harper, he's the head custodian, he's driving. We have a sub-driver.
Excuse me, Ms. Torres, you've reached your three minutes. As the board president, I can't extend that, but if you could wrap it up in the next minute, I would appreciate it.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a, a sub-driver that's been driving for three years with no raise at all. So like I said, I respectfully ask you to honor that handshake and give our subs a raise. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next person that we have signed up to speak tonight is Candace Templeton, and she's going to speak on transportation.
All right, thank you for allowing me to be here. I apologize, I'm getting over whatever is going around everywhere. I am a former student. I am a former employee. I was a bus driver for this district for five years. Ms. Joyce did not teach me, unfortunately. And I have had students in this district for fifteen years now. I have had students, my children have been preschool through graduation in Ravenna. We have never had a transportation issue like this before. While I was a bus driver, I have never, in my years of having kids in this district, have no bussing. We have to provide bussing. We're providing bussing to outside sources. We have had, let's see, fifteen days and nineteen routes where there have been cancellations, not late cancellations, where you don't have transportation to get students to school, from school. The parents are taking time out of their work schedules, taking time off to be able to get students to the school they need to get to. When I was a driver, we had to shift things around. Bus one wasn't there, well, then two and three split that route. Bus one wasn't there, well then two and three split that route. They made sure that the kids got to school. This is completely not acceptable for our children. We're not passing levies. This district, this town is a small community, and they are a community. If they see the school doing what the school needs to do, what they feel the school needs to do, they'll pass levies. But right now, we're not taking care of our kids. We have to get them to school. I personally, I still have my CDL, I have my school bus endorsement. I can pass a background check, I can pass a drug test. I have called Stephen York three times. I have left messages. I have left messages for the superintendent. I can come back, I will sub bus drive every morning and still be able to make it to my job. And I've gotten no phone calls back. I know for a fact other people have done that. You guys have people who are trying to help, and you're not allowing them to help. You guys are falling out of compliance with the things that Mr. Riblin had discussed earlier, that we've had this amount of days where there's been no transportation. There have been X amount of days where the students have been thirty-plus minutes late to school, and that's not including the inclement weather, that's not including the transportation issues because they waited to do roadwork until school started right in front of the high school. Those are just days where you didn't have drivers, you were late, people didn't know where they were going. All of that. These kids need to get to school. There have been, let's see, one, two, three, there's been like six or seven days where the kids are late to school, late coming home from school.
So that is the three-minute mark, but again, if you could wrap it up over the next minute, it would be appreciated.
I apologize.
No.
I want to say, I want to add on to what Ms. Joyce said real quick. The substitute drivers, I started as a sub. They trained me to drive a school bus. Your subs need paid. Oh my goodness, do they need paid. Go out and drive a school bus on a road you don't know, in a district you're new to, in the dark, in the winter. It is terrifying. So I second her, let's give them a raise. But you have people out here trying to help, and the school's not taking advantage of that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Public meeting on the issue of the proposed twenty-two, twenty-five school year calendar.
So you received the calendar proposals, and they are now open to vote with the members of our district, and this serves as the public meeting that they've been placed in consideration.
So now we will move on to our discussion with the student board members of the month. And just a reminder, we have Ryan Hall and Seth Ashley with us tonight. So we want to start with just a few questions. I'll start with just a couple, and then I'll turn it over to the other board members, and they can ask you what they would like to know, have a discussion with you. We will start with Ryan. Can you tell us a little about yourself?
Well, I am a senior at high school. I'm typically one of those overachieving students. I like to help other students. I like to just help. Like, I'm in many leadership clubs, student council, student leadership, Dr. Hebert's Student Leadership Group on education. And I am happy that you elected to be here.
Thank you. Seth, can you tell us a little about yourself?
I am a stu- I am a student at Brown Middle School. I don't do a lot of all those extra activities. I don't know.
Thank you. And you can add more, like, we're gonna have a bunch of questions, so you'll get a chance. Hate to put you on the spot, but we're gonna keep coming back to you, picking your brain.
All right.
So one of the things that I always like to hear, you know, coming tonight, we don't get to see a lot of the students. We see you at different events if we happen to be in the schools or if we run into you somewhere. But being the student board members of the month, you're able to speak not only on behalf of yourself, but on behalf of your peers and represent some of their viewpoints, some of the things that you guys have been talking about together as a group and hot topics for you. So one of the things I would like to know, what do you think the district is doing well? And then to follow that up, what needs improved upon? And we'll start with Ryan.
To start off on a good note, like, I really like how we have many programs here. For example, College Prep Plus, like, I'm benefiting from a lot from that program. I like the many other, like, class courses. Like, I heard that there's barely any schools have industrial arts, but we do. Our program is strong, and we're, and I'm glad to have like that extra chance, courses like Excelis, like, it's good to like have them backup instead of being in like a group full of people who are younger than, or in a different grade than them. As for improvements, I have to admit, like, I didn't know what we needed to improve on until like that levy that was passed, like, it canceled a lot of stuff for high school. Like, they had to let go of many teachers, they had to cancel most of the college programs that that couple teachers taught at Ravenna High School and with the addition of only having one foreign language class. And that's it.
Thank you. Seth, what do you think we are doing well and what do you think we could do better?
I like how we have a lot of advanced classes where it challenges people's, our students' brains who excel in normal classes. But one thing I do not like is some of the substitute teachers. I've had experiences where they won't care and they will just let us be on games or, you know, watch videos on YouTube where we really need to learn what we're supposed to learn that day instead of just sitting there doing nothing.
Thank you. This is my last question. Ryan, as a senior, you've seen a lot more, Seth is at the middle school still. So just looking back, if you were at the middle school, had the opportunity to get some advice or input from a high school senior, what is something that you would share with Seth that could potentially help him as he transitions to high school?
Well, I, like how we talked about earlier, how you're taking Algebra I, eighth grade. I was the same type of student, and I could see that in a way you're the overachiever simple to me. And I could see you taking multiple honors classes at the high school. I would say, I would say to do your best and persevere for it, but don't take too much honors classes that, the saying that, don't eat, don't eat more than you can chew. Because it's gonna be, I'll admit, it's hard taking all those honors, like, taking math, science, social studies, honors classes all year. And it's not gonna be easy, but I promise you that if you go through those honors classes, it'll be real, what's the word, great ending.
Thank you. So that's it for me. Other board members, who have questions?
I wondered, what do you think of the board meetings? What's your, what's your opinion on what we do here?
To be honest, if we were more included, I honestly felt a little bored here, just sitting here listening to you guys talk. Yeah, otherwise it was great. Thanks for having me here.
In my opinion, this is not what I expected it would be. Like, this was my second, second time going to my board, to a board of education meeting, and compared to like, I think it was either like in my middle school years, that it's big, like, I didn't know what I was gonna do in this meeting or what I was gonna do or what I'm not gonna do. But I kind of like agree that we should have like more students up here than just the two of us, like maybe have like, maybe one night invite any leadership groups from either the middle school or high school. Maybe they could like see what the board like has to do, and then maybe we could make our own, our schools better just by learning from them.
Thank you. Do you think either one of you would want to run for the school board when you're older?
I don't know yet, but maybe, maybe not.
Thank you.
It would probably be a lot of work, but I might consider it.
Good, good for you.
Yes, I have been in Ravenna since preschool all the way to senior.
I've been here since kindergarten.
And do you have any brothers or sisters above you or below you?
I have one sister above me here in Arches and four other siblings who are in seventh grade. Did I say four? Four others? Sorry.
They're younger than you.
I have two younger siblings that are in kindergarten, sixth grade.
Both of you mentioned different clubs, groups, and working-type things you do in the school to help both your staff and other students. Do either of you participate, or as spectators even, go to the games or after-school activities at some of the, like volleyball or basketball or football? Or, or, or?
I do play football, and I come to the Ravenna High School football games and some of the basketball games also.
As for me, I, I don't.
Do you have any suggestions why, a lot of ways to get more of the students to come to those events? It seems like we don't have the amount of students that any of us would expect to participate and help with those, the games, the cheering, the things that make a big difference to your fellow students who are playing those sports?
I feel like it would be a little bit of a money issue. Some people don't have the money to get into the games and stuff. Yeah, I can't think of anything else.
That makes sense.
Maybe to extend off Seth's idea, like, maybe what we could potentially do is maybe have like some kind of like, I don't know, like, I know at the high school we have like our attendance clubs, our attendance club. By being there, nine, three percent of the time, we get gift cards. Maybe we could add in like free tickets to events.
My last question would be to Seth. Seth, you're gonna go to ninth grade next year?
Yes.
Are you apprehensive about that, or are you relaxed about that? Are you looking forward to it, or are you not?
I'm a little nervous about it, but all I tell myself is I'm gonna be going to school with the same people that I've been with, so it eases my nerves a little bit.
All right, great. I'm sure you'll do well.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have questions? Well, I just want to thank you both for attending. This was a very lengthy agenda. We had a lot of business to cover, but clearly the people who recommended you figure you were up for the task, coming to the last meeting of the year. So I just want to thank you for staying awake and enduring this all. And thank you for your honesty too, in response to not only the positives, but the negatives. It really is appreciated, and, you know, many times you don't see change in a day, week, or month, but trust me, what you share, what you've said is heard, and it's appreciated. So we do have need for?
We do not have need for.
Oh, we were tabling that one item? I thought we were gonna discuss the one that we removed.
You're right, we can do personnel in executive session.
Okay.
Yes, so yes.
So we do have need for executive session to consider the employment? And matters to be, we want that into matters to be confidential, or is it sufficient to have the employment?
Employment and it'll be two, three, and four.
Two, three, items two, three, and four.
So we do have need.
Do we have a motion to enter into executive session?
A second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tantimonia? Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Yes.